No.
We've got a long one, we've got two minutes.
Got you.
Let's call the meeting to order. Start off with pleas and allegiance, please. My pleas and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adequate notice of this meeting is advertised at Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 11th, 2024, and revised and advertised May 9th, on 2024, and by posting the notice in the Fork River, Atlantic Harbor post offices, and by filing a copy of the notice and the Lacey Township clerk, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Armato? Absent. Mr. Conady?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Armato? Absent. Ms. Claus?
Here.
And Mr. Peters?
Present.
We have a quorum. All right, we're going to go into executive session. Be it resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, and confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately 60 minutes, after which the board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we resume our meeting. I'd like to start off, go right to our reported superintendent, please. And good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay. So normally, we start out by rec-- especially in our May born meeting, we start out by recognizing our two student representatives, and unfortunately, they couldn't be here. And this is going to be their last meeting. So even though they're not here, I want to thank Anthony and Charlotte for spending the last nine months with us and providing us with such informative student reports. And I also just want to point out, not too long ago, I don't know exactly how long ago, but there was a policy implemented that compelled boards of education to have student representation up on the dais. And how many years have we had that?
Many.
Many.
I can't even think how far back.
Like when we didn't?
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, we like having our students join us, and we're so appreciative of their involvement. So today, we were supposed to welcome Kayla Fitzpatrick, who's the SGA Executive Board President, and senior class--
Kayla, where's your--
Oh, you are here! Would you like to join us up on the dais?
Sure.
Or are you not ready to do that?
Whatever you like.
Come on up.
Come on up. So Eric Strine, you are the senior class president, and Kayla Fitzpatrick--
(applause) Is that her? Do you take your place?
There you go.
May you assume your management positions.
So not to put either one of you on the--
You're not ready for us on here right now, right? No. Okay, come on.
Not to put either of you on the spot, but would you like to say anything?
I would just like to say that I'm really excited to work with everyone and to be in this spot, so, yeah.
Same here.
Sorry about that. I did not know you were with us tonight. All right. So, and I know you won't be joining us for the June board meeting, so we'll see you in September, yes? All right. Awesome. Another round of applause. Okay. So we have a lot of presentations tonight. We have seniors of the month, we have staff members of the month, but before we do that, I do want to talk a little bit about the budget, because a lot has happened. And since December, I feel like things have been happening day by day, week by week. So last Tuesday, the board held its fifth board workshop, which is fantastic, because prior to last year, we weren't having board workshops at all. And it's an opportunity for the board to talk about the budget, interact with the public by accepting public comment. And our last one, I'm going to say, was very productive. So during that meeting, we discussed the advocacy that has been going on, and it's been tremendous, as has been our media coverage. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to see some of the articles that the Asbury Park has posted, printed, along with Jersey Shore Online. And I'm happy for that, because they hadn't really been covering our story. This past Thursday was a big, big day for legislation with the passage of Senate Bill 4161, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute, but I want to give a huge shout out to Giada DeAngelo. Are you here tonight? There you are. And Logan Edgeworth, right here.
One second.
Yeah. Great stuff. Um, Giada and Logan were in Trenton along with Mike Ryan. Are you here? Where's Mike Ryan?
All the way in.
There you are, all the way in.
Yeah.
With Mr. Satello and Mrs. DeAngelo. I think you're all here. Right in front of me, right in front of me. And so I just have to applaud especially our students, because it is, it was my fifth time in Trenton. My first time, I was, I have to, I'll be honest, I was terrified. I didn't know what to expect. And these two were expecting to go first, and because the bill was in negotiations with the governor and legislators, they had to wait the entire day. And it was, you know, they brought their lunches, and at one point, I walked past them, and they were in another room eating their lunch. It was, it was awesome. But they waited all day, and they provided testimony that was fantastic. And with your permission, I have to ask your parents, I'm going to add that to our website so that everybody can see and watch your testimony. It was fantastic. So another round of applause. Okay. So what does Senate Bill 4161 do for us? First of all, there was a lot of confusion, because it was Senate Bill 4161 and 3081. It's now 4161. It was just combined, because language was changed. I'm not going to get into the rigmarole of the why behind it, but it's just Senate Bill 4161. So Thursday's action moved the bill to a final vote. That happened yesterday. The bill was then approved by both houses of the Assembly. And then we just learned about an hour ago that the governor did in fact sign the bill. In fact, we just talked about it, and we have his statement here. So assuming that nothing in the bill changed since yesterday, the bill has two provisions. The first is that it restores 45% of a portion of our lost state aid. And second, it allows us to increase the tax levy up to, and it's really important that we emphasize, up to 9.9%. Now, obviously, we've done some preliminary calculations, making some assumptions, and even though it is going to restore some monies to us, it's not entirely going to cover the deficit, unfortunately. So we have a big task ahead of us. Our job now is to analyze what it all means, because in addition to the governor's statement, the bill was released, so we have to analyze that, make sure no changes were made, and then from there, figure out what will be restored to us in terms of our lost state aid to close the deficit. So yesterday afternoon, the finance committee met to start having that discussion and start talking about applying those provisions to our deficit, to see what it is that we're going to be able to do. So obviously, we're going to keep you updated as we move forward in this process. I mean, our finance committee has met nearly every week for the past, I'm going to say, eight weeks. So the last thing I want to say is, another bill that was passed alongside this one was about timelines, because we know that May 7th was the day, or maybe you don't know, but May 7th was the day that we were supposed to present a final budget, which we could not do, because our executive county business official, who's responsible for approving our final budget, did not sign a budget, because we didn't have one, because we have a deficit. The bill that was passed allows us to manipulate that timeline a bit, and we're, I'm going to say that I'm going to take a guess here, and we've had this discussion, that what's going to happen is that we have to make some decisions based on the understanding of that bill. Then we have to re-present a tentative budget, which we will do here in another board meeting. And then shortly thereafter, well, after that, then the ECO approves the budget, and then we present the final budget. What that timeline looks like and what we're required to do is still unclear. We don't know. Is it going to be two weeks? Is it going to be one month? Is it going to be by July? We don't know that. So I don't want to guess, and I don't want to give anybody false hope, but as far as we're concerned, the bill is good news in terms of restoring some state aid. Before I make two more comments, I just want to say that our community, our school community, has been amazing with the phone calls, the texts, the emails--
Thank you.
--the testimony. You know, we put our signs up at each of our schools, we've updated our websites. So, and there's a lot more out there, but at least for this room, I want to say thank you and beyond to all of the people that have helped us with this advocacy. Your voices were definitely, definitely heard, and I know this, because on Thursday, I had a conversation with Senator Armato, and he did in fact tell me that Lacey was well-representative in terms of advocacy. So kudos to all of you. Yeah. And then the last thing I want to say is, looking around, I suspect that some of you are here to speak on behalf of specific staff members. And I'm going to say, you all have a right to speak. You all do. But I just want you to know, we are doing everything we can to restore as much as possible in terms of programs, but most importantly, staff. So I'm not trying to dissuade anybody from speaking, but, you know, with this timeline having been extended, we still don't have specifics, but we know we have to move quickly.
Speak respectfully.
Okay?
Speak respectful.
Yeah. So we just ask you to just be respectful, understand, again, we're doing everything we can, working within the parameters that were just given to us. So we just ask for your patience as we navigate this new information. And, you know, like we've heard, information changes daily. And while I am confident that his statement tells us that nothing has changed in the bill, we have yet to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. So, okay. Like I said, we have a lot of presentations, and I do want to get to them. So I now turn it over to Mr. King for our May and June seniors of the month.
Thank you, Dr. Ferrer. Thank you, Board of Education members, everyone that attended tonight. It is a great pleasure of mine to introduce not only the May, but also the June seniors of the month, so we have a busy docket here. Our first senior of the month is Senior Lori DeLeo. Lori, come on down.
Here we are, celebrating May's seniors of the month. Our first senior of the month is Lori DeLeo. Here's a video on her accomplishments.
Hi, I'm Lori, and I'm proud to be named May's Senior of the Month at Lacey Township High School.
Congratulations, Lori, on this well-deserved recognition of Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Lori, on being named Lacey Township High School Student of the Month.
Some clubs I've previously been a part of include Challenger League, where I participated for two years. I've also, I'm completing the OCC program here at Lacey Township High School, and I've previously run the Lacey Township Prom Boutique.
Last year, when the prom boutique fell through, even after you had collected so many gowns and spent your free time preparing, I knew you would not let it go. And there you were, bright and early this school year, insisting that this year was going to be the year for Senior Prom Boutique.
The main thing I do outside of school is I work at an assisted living facility, where I mainly work with people with dementia and Alzheimer's.
Lori was the first student that I was able to put a name to the face when I first came to the high school. She, she has a great sense of humor, she's very engaging, and she's an outstanding role model and a firm representative of Lacey Township High School.
My favorite memory here at Lacey Township High School was completing an internship program my sophomore year, where I mainly worked with the 18 to 21 special needs students.
I first met you three years ago, when you were interning in Ms. Bannon's 18 to 21 Transitions Program. I was inspired by the way you interacted with students and staff. I knew you were something special then, and the more I got to know you these past three years, the more I realized what a unique, strong, and heart-driven student you are.
Now that I've completed the OCC program, I'm planning on joining the National Council Certification for Activities Professionals, where I can become a certified activities director and work with people with Alzheimer's and dementia.
Congratulations, Lori. It's a well-deserved honor. Good luck to you and all of your future endeavors.
Well, Lori DeLeo, I see you. You are seen. And congratulations on winning Senior of the Month. Thank you for letting me be a part of your story. You are an inspiration. Best of luck in your future endeavors.
All right. Congratulations, Lori. Our next senior of the month is Jackie Wang. Jackie, come on down. All right. We'll make sure he gets his award, if he'll be able to play with you.
Our next May Senior of the Month is Jackie Wang. Here's a video on his accomplishments now.
Hello, my name is Jackie Wang, and I'm proud to be named May's Senior of the Month at Lacey Township High School.
Jackie, I can't think of a student that's more well-liked and respected by their peers. Everybody loves Jackie. You're always there to help out, and your brutal honesty is always appreciated, even if it's painful. You always keep it real.
Outside of school, I like to stay active, particularly lately, we've been playing a lot of basketball, and I love to go to the gym. It's balling season right now.
You came into this STEM Academy quiet, reserved, and now you're leaving confident in your own abilities. I got to tell you, Jackie, not only have you gone to the gym to increase your physical ability, but your mental ability has also increased. I got to tell you, having you in class these last two years, your junior and senior year, you're a rock star, an absolute rock star.
My favorite memory at LTHS is winning the sea perch competition for states and placing a lot at international competition, as well as participating in the cardboard canoe project for STEM, which was a lot of fun designing the cardboard. That took a while, actually. Took a very, very long time, but we were the dragon warriors, and we had some awards, and we had a lot of fun.
You're an outstanding person with great character, one that I truly admire every single day. You do the right thing regardless of the situation. That's something that you could definitely take out of here, and nobody could take that away from you. I got to tell you, I'm extremely proud of the man you are.
After high school, I'll be attending NJIT as a part of the architectural program, and I'm considering majoring in either engineering or architect, and minor's up for grab.
Jackie, an all-star four years ago, I do as a freshman on camera during their Google meets, and it was really hard to figure out what type of student you really were, but you're awesome. And you've excelled in so many areas, including Woodymun State Robotics, moving on to internationals with your team, and I just wish you the greatest success at NJIT.
So congratulations, Jackie Wang, on being named Senior of the Month.
Jackie, one more time, congratulations on Student of the Month. Go Highlander.
Our last senior of the month for May is our vocational Senior of the Month, and it's Jesse Laird. Jesse, come on down.
And our vocational Senior of the Month for May is Jesse Laird. Here's his video.
Hi, I'm Jesse Laird, and I am proud to be the vocational student of the month for May.
Congratulations, Jesse Laird, for being named Vocational Senior of the Month.
Jesse, you are one of those rare talents a teacher occasionally comes across. If only there were more people like you, the world would be a better place.
A lot of what I did throughout high school was football and wrestling. Those were my two main sports. I went to training for both of those after school. I did a lot of wrestling after school my junior and senior year. I was wrestling five days a week at times, six days a week at times, seven days a week at times, sometimes even more. Spent a lot of time working out. I used to be in the weight room here every day, now I go to a different gym, but every day after school, I used to come in, and I used to work out in our own weight room.
It has been my pleasure getting to know Jesse this year as a student taking U.S. History II honors. Jesse has a lot of interesting perspectives to share and is very well-read in the subject of history and current events, and contributes positively to our classroom environment and our discussions, both academically and socially.
I'm going to miss having students like you in class. You always have a smile on your face, and your enthusiasm and work ethic always lifts those up around you.
I wish Jesse all the luck in the future, and congratulations again on being named Vocational Senior of the Month.
Jesse, you are destined to do great things. I wish you nothing but happiness and success. And remember, you still owe me a wrestling match.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you. All right. Congratulations, Jesse. All right. At this time, we're going to transition to our June seniors of the month. We have two of them as well. Our first senior of the month for June is Madison English. Madison, come on down. Good to have you here, so a lot of applause for you, everyone.
Here we are with our June seniors of the month, and our first senior of the month is Madison English. Here's a video on her accomplishments.
Hi, I'm Madison English, and I'm proud to be named June's Senior of the Month for Lacey Township High School.
Madison, congratulations for winning Senior of the Month.
Today, we are here to congratulate Madison English for Student of the Month. I could not think of a more diversified student athlete and involved community member to win this accolade.
All throughout my high school career, I've been a part of Lacey's choir and drama club. I also participated in tennis, softball, and peer mediation as well.
Madison, you are an amazing academic student in the Leadership Academy of Humanities, and you are just an amazing athlete. Having a student athlete represent us again this month is a great honor. You always push it to the limit academically. Your projects are great, your artistic achievements are great, and we couldn't be happier for you.
Outside of school, I participate in travel softball, and I'm also part of the Antlers Volunteer Group for the Elks.
Maddie's known to help throughout our community, not only through programs such as National Honor Society, which outreaches throughout Lacey Township, but also programs in the community that are outside of school, such as Antlers.
One of my favorite high school memories is just being a part of Drama Club specifically. There, I met so many amazing people and friends that I honestly consider family, so that's honestly probably been my favorite memory of the high school.
You know, Madison, in the leadership course, you were a part of so many projects, and I have to say, just having the experience to work with you, to see you present four major projects last year in front of large crowds and handle them perfectly, to understand how to present projects and how to work with others around you, not to mention what you're achieving in your personal time with sports and arts and what you're doing to make your school community better and your capstone project, it's just really a pleasure to watch, and we're really going to miss you.
After high school, I'll be continuing my education at TCNJ, and possibly in 2025, going into the Air National Guard.
But lastly, and most important, since we know our community is about pride and tradition, I'll let you in on a little secret. Maddie English is our Lacey Lion.
And to collaborate with you, we will miss you. Good luck in your next adventure and challenge. We're always here if you need us.
Always remember, Maddie, that once a lion, always a lion, and best of luck at TCNJ.
Congratulations, Madison. And our final senior of the month for June is Logan Brash. Logan, come on down, Logan. All right, we'll make sure Logan gets his, gets his award as well. Slack?
Our next senior of the month for June is Logan Brash. Congratulations to all of our seniors of the month this year. You've all done a great job. Good luck with your future endeavors.
Hi, my name's Logan Brash, and I'm proud to be named June's Senior of the Month at Lacey Township High School.
Congratulations, Logan Brash, on being named Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Logan Brash, on being named Senior of the Month.
I'm a part of the STEM Academy, National Honor Society, and I've played basketball all four years at Lacey Township High School.
You know, Logan, ever since you came in as a freshman, you were always confident in your own abilities. One thing I really admired, watching you since your freshman year, growing to your senior year, I got to tell you, your confidence level actually increased, but it's one that really fits you. You're confident in the classroom, on the court, and out of school. That level of confidence is going to take you extremely far, and I can't tell you how proud I am of you of everything you've accomplished over the last four years.
I'd say some of my favorite memories are playing sports and making those memories with all of my friends, as well as, I'd say, all the dances as well, and just any activities I got to spend with my friends in high school.
Logan, you are very deserving of this honor, as you are an impressive student in the classroom as well as out. It has been a pleasure watching you grow and learn over the last two years. I first met you as a junior in my U.S. History II honors course, and if you remember, we had like a really special group of kids, like a really small group of kids, and we had a lot of fun. This year, as an AP student, you have really set yourself apart. You have a lot of really interesting perspectives to share, and it's been really lovely watching you grow into a young man.
I'd say some of the things I like to do outside of school are hanging out with family and friends, going to the beach, playing pickup basketball, just anything that I can do, stay active.
So you know, Logan, even when you were a junior last year in STEM III, we did leadership presentations, and you took that with stride. One of the biggest parts I could possibly tell you is because of your confidence, you had the ability to be able to knock those presentations out every single time. Absolute pleasure to have in class.
After high school, I plan on attending the University of Delaware, majoring in kinesiology.
Once again, congratulations to you, Logan. You really deserve this honor, and we're very excited to see where the future takes you.
So congratulations, Logan Brash, on being named Senior of the Month.
Dr. Ferrer, Board of Education members, it has been a true pleasure presenting the seniors of the month this year. They are a small representation of the amazing students we have in this building. I'm proud of each and every one of them, so it was my pleasure to share that with you. Yeah. Come on up. We have our first guy. Come on up, come on. Come up here, come up here. Grab your, grab your, let's go, we're going to work. Let's go. All right. Okay. Come on over here. All the way. Come on over. Yep. There you go. All right. So part of your duties is going to be to describe what's going on for the month. So we have some words here, I'm going to take care of that. So that'll be your job, one coming to next year. And then you present the unsung hero. So this month, to take the pressure off of you, I'll read the descriptions and you two can present the awards to our members, okay? All right. So first, news from the SGA. SGA met on May 14th. Sophomores, please check out the LTHS and LTMS homepage for information and links for the commencement sales and lawn science banners and websites. For juniors, we had a very, very successful junior prom on May 2nd. Side note, a great junior prom. It was awesome. Dancing the entire time, food. It was awesome. Thank you for all the chaperones who helped make this night so special. The Kisses Senior Goodbye fundraiser will be wrapping up during the start of June. And for seniors, June 13th is the prom, and senior events are being worked on. Mental note to seniors, you must be in school June 14th. That's not in the notes, those are my notes, so make sure that happens this year. The next SGA meeting will be in September. The exact date and time will be posted when the school resumes in September. Okay. Now it is time to award our unsung heroes for May. The unsung hero for May 2024 is Joseph Diadet. Joseph, you're here. Come on up, Joseph. Round of applause for your family, dear love. Joseph plays a lot of sports for our high school, including football in the fall and our track during the winter season, and track and field during the spring season. Every time Joseph walks into a room, he turns every room. He walks into a positive habitat. Joseph is also willing to help out a friend in need whenever they may be in trouble. Joseph loves to show his school spirit all around the school and loves to show off his sports team with his Cowboys and Yankees gear. Academically, Joseph is in very good academic standing and participates in class whenever he is given the chance to. Congratulations to Joseph Diadet for being our unsung hero for May 2024. Nice job. Nice job. And as with the seniors of the month, we're also going to do June's unsung hero as well. The freshman class of the Student Government Association SGA has nominated Dylan Graham as the recipient of the unsung hero award for the month of June. Dylan, is Dylan here? Okay. What will get Dylan his award, certainly? Dylan is a person of great character and always puts others over himself. He is never afraid to stand up for what is right and is a true leader. A member of both the Lacey Township High School wrestling and soccer teams, Dylan is a phenomenal team player. He supports his teammates and respects the players of the opposing side. It is for these reasons that SGA has selected Dylan as a recipient of the unsung hero award for June. Congratulations to Dylan as well. Good job. All right, Dr. Ferrer, that concludes my presentation for the evening.
All right. Well, that makes me sad. I don't know what we're going to do in June. No seniors of the month in June, but congratulations to everybody. Another round--
The unsung hero for May 2024 is Joseph Diadetta. Joseph, you're here. Come on up, Joseph. Joseph plays a lot of sports for our high school, including football in the fall and our track during the winter season and track and field during the spring season. Every time Joseph walks into a room, he turns every room. He walks into a positive habitat. Joseph is also willing to help out a friend in need whenever they may be in trouble. Joseph loves to show his school spirit all around the school and loves to show off his sports team with his Cowboys and Yankees gear. Academically, Joseph is in very good academic standing and participates in class whenever he is given the chance to. Congratulations to Joseph Diadetta for being our unsung hero for May. Nice job. And as with the seniors of the month, we're also going to do June's unsung hero as well. The freshman class of the Student Government Association SGA has nominated Dylan Graham as the recipient of the unsung hero award for the month of June. Dylan, is Dylan here? What will get Dylan his award certainly? Dylan is a person of great character and always puts others over himself. He is never afraid to stand up for what is right and is a true leader. A member of both the Lacey Township High School wrestling and soccer teams, Dylan is a phenomenal team player. He supports his teammates and respects the players of the opposing side. It is for these reasons that SGA has selected Dylan as a recipient of the unsung hero award for June. Congratulations to Dylan as well. All right, thank you. Good job. All right, Dr. Frey, that concludes my presentation for the evening.
All right, well, that makes me sad. I don't know what we're going to do in June. No Seniors of the Month in June. But congratulations to everybody. Another round of applause for our May and June Seniors of the Month. And to our unsung heroes, a round of applause to both of them as well. All right, and May and June, we are going to have both of our... So tonight, we have our Staff Members of the Month presentations, but we'll have that in June as well. And like I say, behind the success of every student is an amazing teacher that helped him or her get there. So I'm not sure if our Staff Members of the Month are here, but is Dawn Bentevegna with us? No? Not here? And how about Jamie Sisano? No? Either one? Okay. I think it was a little confusion because our board meetings are usually on Thursday. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a little bit about them. We're going to show their Staff Member of the Month video. We have that, Mr. Lidle. And then we'll make sure that they get their certificates and maybe even have them join us in June. So, Dawn Bentevegna is a math technology teacher at the middle school, and she was nominated by several of her colleagues who said this about her. Dawn shows up every day to ensure that her students are thriving and learning, motivating those who are struggling. Her care and concern for her students has helped keep them on track in not only her class, but in other classes as well. Dawn has single-handedly planned Bring Your Child to Work Day activities at Lacey Township Middle School for the past few years. She works so hard to make sure that every child visiting the building had a magical day filled with games, activities, prizes, and ice cream. She is kind and looks out for others. It is for those reasons and so many more that Dawn has been named May Staff Member of the Month. Congratulations, Dawn. And Jamie Sisano is an English teacher at the high school, also nominated by her colleagues who said this about her. Dr. Sisano is one of the most dedicated staff members at Lacey Township High School. She is a core member of the LAH Academy, the lead instructional data coach for our department, and a freshman English teacher. She wears many hats at all times, but she never cuts corners on any of her responsibilities. She models what it means to be someone of integrity, and she expects the same from her students, never letting them settle for mediocrity. If you walk into her classroom at any time, you can see her students fully engaged in the lesson of the day. It is for these reasons and so many more that Dr. Sisano has been named May Staff Member of the Month.
All right, here we are at the high school, getting ready to celebrate another Staff Member of the Month. Let's go in the room. All right, we have an announcement to make. Each month in the district, Staff Members of the Month are recognized for being amazing staff members, teachers, all sorts of roles. I am proud to announce that this month, Dr. Sisano is our Staff Member of the Month.
I nominated Dr. Jamie Sisano for Staff Member of the Month for May. It was an easy choice for me. Jamie is somebody who goes above and beyond for everybody. Her integrity in the classroom that she holds, not only herself, her peers, and her students too, is really commendable. She's always in there doing something engaging, something fun, motivating kids to be better than they were yesterday. She is somebody that is a go-to in our department. She has done so much for us the whole school year, and she really is somebody who deserves this recognition. Jamie, I'm so happy for you. Congratulations.
We're here to celebrate the Staff Member of the Month. We're going to surprise Ms. Bentevega in our math class. We're going to celebrate her accomplishments. Congratulations. We're celebrating Ms. Bentevega for being named Staff Member of the Month. Congratulations. So, two people get selected in the district, the entire district, for being Staff Member of the Month, and you were nominated by your peers and then voted on by the committee.
Well, thank you, everyone. I want to thank everyone for the nomination. It was very exciting just to be nominated. I think I may have won something. Student of the... Teacher, Staff Member of the Month. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the community for sending us wonderful children. Love them so much. Thank you to my partner, Ms. McIntyre. She makes me better every day. I hope I also make her feel better. Thank you to our kids. Thank you to the boss.
We're a little role predator.
Dawn Bentevegna for a lot of reasons. One reason that we nominated her was that the middle schools had a really tough year. And following, you know, a really traumatic loss for the school, Dawn was an amazing example for everybody of, you know, just empathy and being there for each other, both for the students and for staff members. And I think it really impacted a lot of people in both of those categories. But that's not the only thing that Dawn does.
She does so many more things. So, we celebrated Bring Your Child to Work Day at the middle school, and Dawn has, over the past few years, slowly begun to organize more and more activities for the children who come to visit. And it's become like an amazing day where, from morning to, you know, afternoon, there's something for these kids to do every minute of the day, and it's, you know, some of the best days that they have. So, my daughter comes, she had like the best day ever and wanted to come back the next day. And then your daughter came too, and they had so much fun, and it just makes the school such a magical place. So, we really appreciate Dawn, all of her enthusiasm for everything, always.
And we will make sure that they both get their certificates. All right, so we have two more Lacey Nows, and I usually thank Mr. Merman after the fact. I want to thank him ahead of time because him and his students, he and his students, do an amazing job with our Lacey Nows. They used to be called the Lacey Minute, but we've far surpassed the minute, which is... It's five minutes? Okay, there we go. We're going to call it the Lacey Five Minute. No, that's why it's the Lacey Now. All right, go ahead, Mr. Lidle.
You all may be seated. This court is now in session.
Can you clarify part of the plea deal?
Yes, it was to truthfully testify against Els Kirwin and detail all the money I'd given him.
On the charges of honest service and email fraud, Els Kirwin, not guilty.
Hi, I think I may have to send that Lacey Now to the Governor and the Commissioner of Education. All right, I don't have any other comments, but I know that before we continue with the rest of our meeting, if there are any students that have homework and would like to exit stage, right? Now would be the time to do it. You can say, but... Yes.
Eric, congratulations.
Congratulations. Folks in the back, we have some room up front. If you want to come up front and have a seat.
How are you?
Okay. Next, we're going to move on to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand when called upon upon stating their name, address, or affiliation, and attention to make a statement. If you're a student, please do not give out your address to say you're a student, okay? Please. Comments will be addressed to the Board President. Comments will be made at one issue at a time. Comments are limited to five minutes. No audience member may, shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only. There will be no questions answered. The purpose of this meeting is to perform our business in a public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. Do we have anyone for public comment? Go ahead. Could you do me a favor? Could you go to the microphone so we could hear you? Thank you so much.
Can you hear me? I'm a sophomore, oh gosh, at the Lacey Township High School. I went to the Senate meeting last Thursday and testified on behalf of our staff and students. My mom also came with me, along with Mr. Satello and Dr. Pereira. Thank you a lot. And of course, my partner, Craig Logan, thank you, of course, for eating lunch with me too. It was a hard day. Anyways, I testified on behalf of our staff and students. I arrived at 9:30 a.m. but didn't testify until 5:30 p.m. Although the bill was passed to get us some of the funding back that we have lost, unfortunately, it doesn't give us all that we need. We need you, the Board of Education, to figure out how to fill the gap. We need our teachers, sports clubs, and most of all, I need Monte. I hope you make this happen. The students of Lacey Township High School deserve to have a fulfilling high school experience and deserve to live freely without having anxiety on whether or not their favorite teacher is going to be gone tomorrow or next week. We are nervously waiting for your response and whether or not we will have our teachers. Please help us. Thank... Please help us. Excuse me. Thank you for your time and for letting me speak today, and another special thanks to Dr. Pereira. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a student of the Lacey Township... I'm a student of Lacey Township Schools. I had the amazing opportunity to testify for Senate Bill A1461 in the New Jersey Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee on Thursday. I was there from 9:30 in the morning until around six, six o'clock at night. This bill passed, and it's now up to you to take the right action. For those who don't know, Bill A1461 gives the school, I think Senator Zwicker said $1.442 million back, unless the school board raised taxes up to 9.9%. You as a board need to do the right thing. If that means raise taxes, so be it. This is, this school district, these kids cannot afford to lose these teachers that give them an outlet, make them feel welcome. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else have a comment?
Everybody, John Satello, Lenoka Harbor. As with the two who just spoke, I also went to Trenton, and I spoke on behalf of Lacey Township. And it was a very nerve-wracking experience, standing up there, well, sitting in the chairs and waiting. I think we could probably write a dissertation about Oprah, but we'll not go into that one, thank God. It was a very nerve-wracking experience, okay? So, we're up there trying to figure out what we can say to the Senate to get them to understand what Lacey Township is having issues with. Because there are other schools that do have the same issues as we have too. We need to, now that the bill is passed, we need to look at this and use this as an experience, right? We've now gone through the worst part of the S2 budget. The worst part of it is done. What we're asking you to do is to look at, look at what's given back to you. Do the right thing. Do the right thing for the children in this township. Do the right thing for everybody here. Education is the number one priority for what you are here to do on the board's seat. These children need their teachers. They need everything that they can get their hands on. Teachers. Teachers and education, the experience in the school. Don't let them falter because of a budgeting issue. Again, now that we've gone through the worst part of this, you're giving some of the money back. I had the pleasure of talking to Senator Amato, and I had the pleasure of talking to Senator Zwicker, who was a sponsor of the bill. And they were extremely impressed, as well as I am and as well as everybody else in this room should be, these two children that had the, the get up and go to go and speak at the senate, to speak at these meetings. This is what the future is, the children that are here. And making sure that they have that voice, making sure that they have what they need to be successful in the Lacy School District is what's needed. So I'm asking you to do what's right for every single student that's in this community. Pass, do what you need to, keep every one of our teachers that we can. And I am going to be a little selfish, and I'm going to say, Mr. Montague is one of those teachers that needs to remain in Lacy Township. Unfortunately, earlier today, I heard from one of our dear friends that is a teacher in Forkett River School, that she got the letter that she has been dreading. And that hurts. It hurts really bad because that's going to be a very devastating loss to Forkett River School. I'm hoping that we're not gonna hear more of these. So please, do the right thing, do the right thing for your educators, do the right thing for your students. Thank you.
Please do your comment. You have three minutes left of tonight. The clock started.
Maurice's clock at noon, right? Michael Ryan, Executive Officer of the LTA. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I want to start my comments tonight by spotlighting two very special Lacy students that we've all heard tonight. I couldn't be more proud of Giada D'Angelo and Logan Edgeworth. I watched them both step up out of their comfort zones to advocate for what's right. They spent the entire day on Thursday last week in Trenton to address senate committee in order to pass legislation to restore our funding. Congratulations and thank you guys. They did a terrific job and truly showcased our wonderful students here in Lacy are capable of. I also want to thank Dr. Pereira as well. Now, let's turn our attention to why we were in Trenton last week. As we're all aware, we are facing a $7 million deficit after already cutting 27 staff members. I want to say that again, already cutting 27 teachers. We are still down 7 million. Our district had formed an S2 committee. That committee comprised of, excuse me, some board members, upper admin, building administration, and staff. That committee was tasked with brainstorming ideas as how we could seek out fine ways to help restore funding. Our LTA members took that on task and ran with it. We drafted and sent letters to local and state leaders. We flooded phone lines to legislative offices, so much so that they turned off their phones two weeks ago, Thursday and Friday. We met with parents and parent groups to help get the word out. We met on county level with other districts to spread the word. We spoke to retiree organizations. We even sat down with NJA President Sean Spiller, Vice President Steve Beatty, and Secretary Treasurer Petal Robinson about our plight in Lacy. Then, we were directed to a piece of proposed legislation that could help us out. Assembly Bill 4161, Senate Bill 3081. This bill allows the district's opportunities to go above the 2% standard tax increase in order to make up for lost funding. Now, there are many that are against this legislation, which would allow districts like ours to raise 9.9%. While I completely understand their opposition to this, and obviously, this is not the way we wanted to have restore our funding, but this is the path that lays before us. This is the path that we need to take. This is the path which saves our schools. Many people hear 9.9 and have sticker shock, but let me break it down. The average $287,000 home could see a monthly increase of around $35 per month. That's about $420 annually. Not taking advantage of this opportunity presented before us puts us at class sizes at 40-plus, pay to participate sports and extracurricular activities, loss of courtesy busing to and from school, and cuts to special ed programs. We as LTA have done all we could do at this point. This board constantly speaks to how students come first. This, this is the opportunity to prove it. It's not an easy decision to make, but making it allows you to lie your head on your pillow at night, knowing you may have made a tough decision, but it's the right one for our students. I ask you now, members of the board, how will you vote on this when it comes time? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone? Okay, public comment closed. Board, community reports. Would you like to start, Ms. Claus?
Okay, I am gonna read the April report, and then I'll do this month. We've, we've been meeting every other week at least, so this is gonna be a little lengthy. We started April 11th. We had a township liaison meeting. In attendance was myself, Dr. Pereira, Ms. Ornsby, Mr. Amato, and Skip Peters filled in for Jack until the regular meeting started at 4:15. We just talked about the budget overview, MUA funds. We led a discussion on that for next year. The pilot program, we discussed that. We're looking into recouping 5% of the funds, and we're just gonna see how we can get that back to us from the apartments that we have in town. Crossing guards, we talked about that, and security. Dr. Pereira led a discussion on the need to further, further help from the town. Ms. LaRae stated she would revisit the conversation in January. We also talked about the extra question for September, and discussion followed. Then we had our regular facilities meeting. Again, this is all gonna be repetitive because we have been meeting so often, so a lot of this is already taken care of and done. We had the preschool facilities upgrade grant award project. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the award of the facility upgrade project at Mill Pond. Approval of the project will be subject to the resolution that was on the agenda in April and that passed. School due, brightly replacement. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the replacement of our facility rental and repair and maintenance ticket of the software system. The STEM room project, the update is, at the time, we were looking to get some money back for our countertops. Presently, we did negotiate and we received money for that. The fire alarm project, again, the work is complete, but the punch list from the contractor, we were still working on that to get some money returned. And that's still in process, actually, right now. HVAC update, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the status of the project. That is start to set in, in June. Spring recess update, Ms. Ornsby led the committee and an update for Mr. Smith on all the projects that'll be completed over spring recess. We then talked about finance, hours worth of finance, so you guys have seen it already, about the 2025 budget. We also talked about cost savings in that conversation. Revenue drivers, we led a discussion on the need to start revenue driver possibilities. We talked about like naming, you know, the auditorium or, you know, the fields and things like that to try to bring in revenue. We talked about advertising on the buses. We talked about leasing our land, so you'll see that to come in the future. We also had a discussion on the September ballot, and discussion followed. Contracts, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion about finalizing the VA and Assistant Superintendent contract. Discussions followed. Non-aligned raises, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion about the importance of the non-aligned staff raises and the discussion to be reopened. At this time, all non-aligned, we are holding all increases due to the significant layoffs, so just to make everyone aware, it's across the board. Athletic trainer sub rate, Dr. Pereira, let's see. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion about the need to update the substitute rate for the athletic trainer. The rate is 4334. Insurance, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion about the need for insurance. Archaeology service firm to research insurance coverage from 1977 to 1981 for a lawsuit that was filed against the district. The services will be subject of the resolution on the April agenda. Security, NJ SIG MOC SSIF security grant. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion to the committee that we were awarded the grant of $9,615. Bus aid agreement, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion that the need for shared services agreement with Manchester School District for a bus ride to our school for the, to the regional day school with one of our students. This agreement was on the April agenda. And leasing recreation, we discussed that they could use our buses, and that was also on the agenda in April. Okay, that was it for that one. Then we had another meeting, April 17th. Again, we talked about the budget at length, the $7 million deficit. So at that time, we were in a different place than we are today. And, let's see. Okay, May 6th. It was myself, Mr. Conity, Dr. Pereira, Ms. Ornsby, and Mr. Amato. We talked about the rod grants. I just wanted a little bit of information, because it's been a while since we talked about it. Ms. Ornsby stated that we're still waiting for final approvals, approvals for the state. Fire alarm system, I just said that, we're getting a credit, and we're still in negotiations for that. Already talked about the STEM project, that's pretty much done. HVAC project, Ms. Ornsby, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion to the committee about the project. This is expected to start June 1st, and I believe it's the main office and the guidance, correct? Main office and guidance for June 1st? Yes, okay. Pre-K project update, Ms. Ornsby led an updated committee on this, updated status on this project. The district had a kickoff meeting, May 7th. This project is protected, projected to start June 24th. The new pre-K facilities expansion grant funds, we discussed that. The committee, we had an opportunity to apply for funding for the preschool facilities to get the district full universe within the next five years. Then we had a synergistic update. Really, the only update that we talked about in the meeting was that we can monitor the use through an app for board members and facilities and the committee. But we did also have an update with synergistics at our budget workshop last week, and they came under what they projected, but we still made a profit from reducing our utilities to about 30,000. So the next meeting, he's gonna talk to us about the plan moving forward, how we can save more money. We also talked about the referendum. Dr. Pereira led a discussion on that. And roofs and AC are our priority at this time. Finance, again, the budget, talked about that. Then we also received a donation for $20,000 from the Rotary. So we were just talking about the, you know, what would be the best place to put that money to help our students. Dillicar fishing training, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on that. The quote was on the resolution for the May agenda, and it's just a renewal. Facility rental fees, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the rental fees. The committee did not want to raise the fees at this time. Policy Finder update, Ms. Ornsby provided an update on Policy Finder, discussion followed. Food services, for free and reduced lunch. We tried to come up with some ways to get more people to apply, so Ms. Ornsby said she would talk to Mr. England about, you know, locking out the parents on the portal until all the applications are, are complete. We're just trying to make more people apply for this program. Lunch and aftercare prices, Ms. Ornsby reviewed the pricing for 2024-25 committee. The updated pricing is on this agenda. Okay. Stuff the bus, that's from Seabreeze. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the Seabreeze using one of our staff buses to stuff the bus again. They had a great turnout last year, so we're gonna approve that also. We had one more meeting yesterday. It was more of what ifs, let's hope the bill will pass. So it did pass, but as of yesterday, it didn't, so we discussed again, just some, you know, what would happen if it passed. We also discussed having another finance meeting, probably next week, so we can get the ball rolling on, you know, where we think the money should go. And the, you know, to raise it above the 2% cap. And the salary increases, we talked about that. We're holding all increases right now. And the cafeteria bid on the agenda, we reviewed the bid, which is May 14th on the agenda. And I think that's it. I think.
You think?
I think.
Long enough. Thank you, Ms. Claus.
Yeah.
And I'd like to thank the finance committee for all the meetings they've been having. They've been really working hard with this. Ms. Walker, would you like to do?
Sure.
Curriculum, please.
My minutes are a lot shorter for curriculum, because we have no money. So, we have very short meetings. On April 9th, we had a curriculum meeting. Mrs. Amato, Mr. Bell, and myself met with Mr. Zalinski. We talked first about high school course approval, modeling with mathematics. Mr. Zalinski discussed this course request with us, highlighting it's gonna be a third year course option for students who would not normally take Algebra II in their junior year of high school. This course centers on many practical third-year mathematical applications and concepts. One of the goals of the course is to develop skill and confidence in math that will allow these students to pursue a fourth year of math in their senior year. We then had a discussion about a novel that was brought to our attention, entitled The Absolute Truth Diary of a Part-Time Indian. It was brought to our committee by the public, and we're, we're actually reading this book right now, and then we will be discussing it at our June meeting and recommending to the full board whether we are going to approve that board to stay on our list or take it off. Let's see. Technology was really busy in April. They did updates on real-time. They downloaded and prepared for the SAT tests. State testing preparations, they had to get ready for, so they were really busy. Community relations, they had, we held the Hope in Healing Night on March 25th. They had good attendance. The adult, this was an adults-only program, and, let's see. I know I'm gonna be crossing over into May here. We also discussed the March 15th Health and Wellness Day for the staff. We got a lot of positive feedback that was received from the staff that attended. And then in May, we discussed the committee, the LTS STEM trip to the Smithsonian Museum in Washington, DC. The trip is funded by the STEM students themselves, and they chartered their own private bus. STEM students will view various exhibits at the Smithsonian that have made historical contributions, contributions to the field of study for STEM. The Lacy Township High School Robotics Club, they're competing in the 2024 International Sea Perch Challenge at the University of Maryland on May 31st through 6th, June 1st. They're gonna, it's an overnight trip. We want to wish them a lot of luck in that competition. Let's see. We also talked, in our May meeting, Dr. Pereira joined us for the meeting, and she led a discussion with a Mr. James Rossi from Insight Health. This company would provide a means for the district to streamline health services for our students and their families. Insight provides the district with a dashboard that allows them to connect families with the appropriate therapists or doctors as recommended by the district for the particular situations. So we're gonna be investigating this further and look to see if we have any grants that could possibly pay for this service.
And there's one on our agenda tonight.
And there's one on our agenda tonight. Thank you. We also had a brief discussion of a cellphone policy for the district. We, Dr. Pereira presented an idea of ways that the students, particularly in the high school, would lock up their cellphones during the day. school, would lock up their cellphones during the day that would allow them to be used in case of an emergency. The cellphone policy would be further explored by the policy committee, and it was just a brief discussion, just to get the ball rolling.
I'm already watching reactions.
I didn't want to look up.
Parents are clapping, his, his other heads down?
Let's see. The Cedar Creek Autism Program are going to the Field of Dreams on May twenty-third. We talked about the ES, the summer ESY program. Cedar Creek will be used for that program this summer. And NJ, under technology, NJSLA is underway in four or five testing schools, and the advanced placement testing is taking place at the high school. Mental Health and Wellness Night on April twenty-ninth was a success, had better attendance than last year's. And then Dr. Pereira just presented the sad news about the budget to our committee, and that was our committee, because we have no money, so, thank you.
Mr. Conity?
For policy, we met on Wednesday, April tenth. It was myself, Ms. Claus, Mr. Bell, Dr. Pereira. Discussion about policy letters for performing art students. Had Mrs. Vento in with a conversation and discussion on that. Couple mandated policies have already voted on last meeting. Was the curriculum content. Couple, he's just changing wording, protected categories and replaces with the NJAC codes and everything else. Guidance Counseling, other mandate policy that we already voted on, code of ethics for that one, and then sportsmanship. He didn't, it was actually quick. So that was for April, and then for May, it was myself, Ms. Claus, Mr. Bell, Dr. Pereira, and the cellphone discussion. Had probably a little bit more information.
More to come.
Yeah, more to come. It could go either way. Uh-huh. So nothing's been finalized or anything on that yet, but we see in here, size of it. Talked, policies for tonight. School organization is updating schools and grade alignments and everything else that way. Then P one-one-four-zero, educational equality, this is all just wording, changing, nothing crazier. Comprehensive equity plan, policy, equal opportunities, and then equal, plan opportunity, complaint procedure, and then the equal employment, anti-discrimination practices, changing wording in there as well. And then that is all that we had. Thank you.
Yonder pouch, check it out. Just an option. Yonder, Y-O-N-D-R. Dr. Pereira?
I have no other comments.
No comment. Board comments. Mr. Bell, are you quiet down there?
Yes, sir. I'm asleep, no. No, I do appreciate being part of all of this, and again, thank you to the community for reaching out so much to Trenton. And again, just looking forward, obviously, we as the board want to do everything for our students that we can. It is a tough year, we have to make tough decisions, and I'm thankful I'm the new man in town, and I don't have to take the brunt of everything. Thank you.
Ms. Claus?
Sure. Yeah, we, you know, just being the chair for finance, it does put, you know, it allows us to have a lot of discussions about where the money should go and shouldn't go, and we really want to restore everything and bring back everybody. That's our intention, just so you know. And, you know, I feel we should really take advantage of this increase that we can, and then build off it from there. I know some of the other communities don't want us to raise taxes at all, but we don't really pay that much compared to other counties. So I, I think it's time that we do put back in. It's the only way to keep staff right now. So, you know, I'm, I'm fully supporting raising the taxes. So, you know, hopefully it works out for everybody. We can't save everybody, we know that, everybody knows that, but we're going to do our best, and we're going to try to do what we can for the students, for the clubs and the sports, and try to keep them engaged, especially after the year we had. We, we don't want to send anybody home early at like one-thirty. So it's important for me to, you know, to go as far as we can with raising taxes. Okay, so that's where I stand.
Me? Goes up. Congratulations, students, seniors, staff members, Logan, Giottic, thank you. To nine point nine percent, as a taxpayer, no. As the parent of kids here that you all educate, it's a no-brainer. I don't want my kids in forty-plus rooms and everything else. This year, it's not over, we're still working hard, probably have that meeting end of the week if they pushed it, and then we're looking into next year. So this is a temporary fix. It's not the end-all, be-all, but it's a start, nine point nine. Yes, unfortunately. So that's it.
Ms. Walker?
First of all, I just want to welcome Caleb and Eric for joining our board. They're going to be great additions, and congratulations, and thanks to Anthony and Charlotte for spending the year with us. It's so nice to have them, not like Dr. Pereira said, it used to not be mandated, now it's mandated by code. And we did it long before that, and it's funny how you'll bump into people who are adults now, and some of the parents that sat on this board as student representatives, and, you know, it's fond memories for them, and they, you offer such good insight to the board on what's really happening in the schools as a student perspective. So good luck, and we look forward to having you. Want to thank the community, and thank you guys for going to Trenton, all of you, and Mr. Ryan up there, wherever you are. It is, it's frightening to get up. I mean, first of all, I'm impressed that you get up and speak to us, and there's only, what, seven of us up here, or nine? But to go in front of the Senate, I mean, your legs must have been shaking. So I really admire you, and thank you for doing that for the community. Also, when it comes to the taxes, hey, you know, I'm retired now, I'm one of those retired people that have fixed income. But do I want to see taxes raised? Of course not. However, we're here for the kids, and our kids deserve a great education, as Lacey offers, and they also deserve to have activities and sports and whatever we can keep in place for them, because that makes those kids, they keep focused, and they stay out of trouble, because they're busy doing what they're doing here, and they become good citizens in the future. So we need to really, and I know this board is committed to really working hard to try and bring everything back as best we can. So just be patient with us. Thanks.
I'd like, Mr. Ryan, two students, someone here, please stand for a minute. Mr. Ryan, stand up. Dr. Pereira, could you please stand? How about round of applause again? For drawing the extra mile, thank you. So you count five people, and five people made a difference last week in the vote between today and tomorrow. I want you to come November, all of you should be standing come November when you vote. Remember who put us in this situation. This board has worked tirelessly, night, day, weekends, to try and come up with a budget that was even. Now we have Expo involved, correct? And now she has to approve before we can send it to the county, and we work tirelessly to get this to work. On my election signs, and I'm up in November, says students always first. And I says that I'm making this chair and in those meetings, your students always first, and taxpayers always second. All right? And we're making decision, students always first. So I'm one hundred percent for this, to bring everybody back as possible, cut the class sizes back down, bring back the, all the classes and the class trips and whatnot that are going through on that. So yes, I'm supporting this also. One hundred percent. Don't forget, these five people stood in front of people and spoke. When you go into the election booth in November, you could speak also, just by yourself, you have to stand in front of a crowd. Just remember what this district went through, what this town went through, and why, one town away, they're bragging about their brand-new drum o' tron, let's come look at it. One town away, six miles, five miles from here, there's a town out there on their field bragging about it. And why, in Lakewood, they're bragging about the new pickleball courts, and new tennis courts, and new this, and new that. What is the difference between a student Barnegat and a student Lacey? None. Why should we have to fight and cut and the whole nine yards for that when they're down there bragging about this and that, the whole nine yards? I just can't understand why the life me, why we're getting picked on, and what we did wrong. All right? And that's it. Thank you. Okay, move on to new business. Are you guys ready?
Yeah.
Good?
Yep.
All right. First, we're going to do meeting minutes, A1, page two. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, Conity.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, but I need to abstain on nine-five-five-one-three-six-two-eight-nine-two-nine-nine.
That's the next one.
Did you say one and two?
No, just one.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Page two, I'm sorry. A1, page two. Don't worry about it.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes, but I have to abstain on four eighteen twenty-four, the regular meeting and executive session, I was absent.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Page two, listed bills, A2. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, but now I'll abstain on nine-five-five-one-three-six-two-eight-nine-two-nine-nine and two-eight-three-three-hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes, and I'm abstaining on bill number nine-five-five-eight-zero-three.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes, I'm abstaining on OCVTS two-one-one-two-one-zero.
Thank you.
Pages two and three, transfers, A3 and A4. Can I have a motion, please?
Move. Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pages eight, nine, tuition and transportation, A seventeen to A twenty-one.
Move. Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Who moved, I'm sorry?
I did.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pages eight, nine, tuition and transportation, A seventeen to A twenty-one.
Move. Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Who moved, I'm sorry?
I did.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Page nine, A twenty-two.
S twenty-two?
Yep.
Oh, I can't see.
Motion. Second, Peters.
Yeah, I can.
What's the number, I'm sorry?
A twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page ninety-ten, A twenty-three to A twenty-four, policies and regulations. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page ten, HIBs, A twenty-five to A twenty-six. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page ten, B, donations.
Move.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and thank you very much. Page ten, C, programs slash curriculum.
Move. Second. That's just one and two, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes, and good luck.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Page eleven through seventeen, Certified Personnel, D one through D sixteen.
Discussion?
I'm sorry?
Can we have a discussion?
Sure.
I'd like to table number thirteen, please.
Can I have a motion, please, to table number thirteen?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Oh, and fourteen, I'm sorry, thirteen and fourteen.
A motion to table number thirteen or fourteen, please.
This is the recommendation of the attorney.
Yes.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Abstain.
Mrs. Walker?
I have to abstain on fourteen.
What about thirteen?
I can't find my thirteen, I lost it.
You lost your thirteen, it's after twelve.
Thirteen, I can vote, yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes. So we go back to D one, less thirteen and fourteen, correct? Should I do a D one through twelve, and then fifteen through sixteen?
Sure, that's easier.
Can I do a motion for D one through twelve? Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Can I have a motion for D fourteen?
Thirteen.
I'm sorry, fifteen and sixteen. Motion, please.
I'll motion.
Second, Peters. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conity?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Okay, bear with me here. Yes, but I have to abstain on D fifteen, Mr. Dowd, Mr. Brandis, Mr. Littner, Mr. O'Neill, and Mrs. Molloi, and D- Mr. Litten, and Mr. O'Neil, and Mrs. Molloi, and D15, Mr. Medenski.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 18, 18 through 26, E, Non-Certified Personnel, Sections E1 to E8.
Move.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes, but on E7, I need to abstain on Mr. Ramo, please.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yep.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes.
I have two walk-ons. They're both for grants that we would like to submit for. One is FY24 COPS, School Violence Prevention Program, grant up to $100,000 through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. So I was asking to move the board to approve submission of this grant. Motion?
Move.
Second, Peters.
All right. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Can I have a discussion on that? Can you read that again for me? Was that $100,000 for security?
It's a school violence prevention program for a grant up to $100,000.
Up to 100, okay. Thank you so much. Yes.
Yes, okay.
Second walk-on.
It's another COPS hiring program, up to $40,000 per year, per school resource officer for their salary for a three-year period, and it requires a 25% local match. So I'm asking that the move, the move of the board to approve the submission of this grant. This is also through the Bureau of Justice.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
When you say local match, is that the township or the school district?
That's the school district.
Okay.
I'll move that.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could you like to go back to private session? This time, we go back to private session to discuss the personal matters. We'll be back to finish. Thank you so much. The only way of lots is adjournment after private session. No. Yeah, action will not be taken after we come out of private session. What's that?
Just adjournment.
Yep, that's it. No votes. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
No, we don't need a vote call.
All in favor.
Bye.
Rookie move. We're out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.